Good afternoon, everyone. For those of you who can't see the audience as I can, and if you are on Zoom and watching us, we have a number of young people here who are in kindergarten and maybe elementary school, which is very appropriate for this meeting of the Early Learning and K-12 Education Committee, welcoming all of you to our committee. For those of you who are remote or who will be testifying, please remember when you are prompted to agree to come into the meeting, please accept the prompt. And then make sure that you're in gallery mode so that you can see the timer. We have a number of bills today, and we have enough time, I think, to put a 90-second timer, which is actually a good deal of time. We don't always get 90 seconds in this committee. And so we have a number of prime sponsors with us right now, and so we're going to honor their time by making sure that we are introduced to the bills. And then after we're introduced to those bills, we'll go into the hearing on each of the specific bills. That's the way we'll run it today. And so we will start off with Senator Braun's bill. Senator Braun, you're welcome to come to the front table. And meanwhile, Alex, if you will present 5852.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members. Alex Fairfortune, staff to the committee. The bill before you is Senate Bill 5852 relating to Special Education Safety Net Awards. To provide brief background, the Safety Net Award Committee may award safety net funding to a school district if that district can convincingly demonstrate that all legitimate expenditures for special education exceed all available revenues from state funding formulas, and that it is maximizing its eligibility for related state and federal revenues. Under state law, awards must be adjusted for any audit findings related to special education funding. And under rule, the committee may adjust awards for IEP noncompliance. This practice is informally referred to as proration. In the 2223 school year, awards were prorated by 15% if one area of noncompliance was identified, 30% for two areas, 45% for three areas, and the district was disqualified from receiving any award after four areas of noncompliance were identified. Under this bill, when determining award eligibility and amounts, the Safety Net Award Committee must limit its review to relevant documentation that illustrates adherence to award criteria. The committee may not make determinations regarding the content of IEPs beyond confirming documented and quantified services and evidence of corresponding expenditures for which the district seeks reimbursement. Awards may only be adjusted for application or IEP errors that materially affect the demonstration of need, and only are required to be adjusted for unresolved audit findings rather than all audit findings. In addition to the provisions pertaining to eligibility and adjustments, the bill also directs OSPI by December 2024 to develop a survey of districts with 3,000 or fewer students that requests feedback about the safety net application process, including questions to help identify which components are the most challenging. And by December 2025, OSPI must use the feedback to implement a simplified standardized safety net application for all school districts. A fiscal note was requested but is not yet available. With that, I'll conclude my remarks.
Thank you, Alex. Are there any members of the committee that have any questions for Alex? Seeing none, Senator Braun, welcome again to our committee. And for those of you who don't know, it's been just a pleasure to have Senator Braun as a partner in education. He cares deeply about education for the state and brings us some really good bills. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. It's a pleasure to be here and all the committee members always enjoy my time with this committee. This is, I think, a good follow-on to some of the great work we've done over the last couple of years, last year in particular, on special education funding. We still have a ways to go, and I think we'll get there ultimately. But when you think about the ways we, you know, kind of the conceptually, the way we fund special education, we have the multiplier, which we made a lot of progress on this last year. We have what I consider a gap between the multiplier and the safety net, which is another problem we need to work on. But then we have the safety net. And we continue to do a better and better job of putting funding into the safety net. But when I talk to some of my local school board members, one in particular, they explained some of the challenges they have with getting the full funding when they feel like they meet the qualifications, but they may not get the application perfectly right. And this is particularly true on small or less affluent schools where they just don't have the staffing to get the application right. And what you heard earlier, Alex did a great job explaining the bill, but sometimes when they get as high as even four errors, and these could be simple even typographical errors, they significantly reduce the funding. And all this bill really does is say you can't do that. If you qualify, if the underlying application meets the qualifications, if they didn't get the application quite right, don't hold that, don't hold the school and therefore the student accountable for a simple mistake where they might be, may not be funded to spend the amount of time other schools can spend on the application. Simple idea. I don't think it's one that is, you know, at odds with what OSPI is trying to do and make this simpler. It's simply giving them very specific direction. Don't do that, and go beyond that. Make the applications simpler in the future so we both ensure that the schools are getting the funding they warrant, and we make it simpler for them in the process. It's a simple bill, really driven by a school board director in my district to think that was trying to find a way to make the whole process simpler. I'd encourage you to consider it. Happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions for the sponsor? Thank you very much. We're not seeing any questions. Appreciate that. And...
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to put in a short plug for the following bill, another great bill coming right after me.
Okay. Well, that's great. So we have another great bill coming along. I think they're all great bills. Certainly, every prime sponsor believes that they are. Senator Trudeau, would you like to come forward? And meanwhile, Alex, will you present us 5883?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members. Again, Alex Fairfortune, staff. The bill before you is Senate Bill 5883 relating to the burden of proof for special education due process hearings. To provide brief background, in accordance with the federal IDEA, parents and school districts have a right to request a due process hearing on any matter relating to the identification, evaluation, educational placement, or provision of a free appropriate public education to a student with a disability. The IDEA and state law are silent about which party to the hearing has the burden of proving the facts at issue. In 2005, in Schaefer v. Wiest, the U.S. Supreme Court held that the party requesting a due process hearing bears the burden of proof under the IDEA. However, six states have passed legislation to override this default to place the burden of proof on school districts rather than the party requesting the hearing. This bill provides that the school district has the burden of proof when it is a party to a due process hearing, and specifies that the burden of proof must be met by a preponderance of the evidence. However, a parent that seeks tuition reimbursement for a unilateral parental placement still has the burden of proof on the appropriateness of that placement. A fiscal note was requested but has not yet been received, and that concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Any questions for Alex? No. Alex, what does IEDA stand for?
The Individuals with Disabilities Education Improvement Act.
And that was a federal act?
Or, sorry, Education Act. Yes.
That was federal. Thank you very much. Senator Trudeau, welcome to our committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee. Just appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you. For the record, Yasmeen Trudeau, representing the 27th Legislative District. And I think it's the first time I've testified in front of this committee, which is kind of fun and very scary. But I think staff did a good job sort of explaining what happened a number of years ago in terms of the courts determining, you know, that whoever requests the hearing has the burden of proof. When this bill, when advocates brought me this bill, I have some familiarity with this. So they brought it to me expecting that I may have some context, given that I have supported my mother, who is a limited English language speaker and does not read or write, in her navigating the IEP and just special education process for my younger brother Naim, who attends Stadium High School in Tacoma. And so I'm just familiar with the power dynamics, with really understanding some of the ways in which parents, and especially parents that are in similar situations, really bear the burden in many ways in these processes. So, you know, right now, parents have to hire attorneys and experts. They're required then to figure out what data to request or collect, basically to prove a negative. It puts parents like mine without a lot of resources at a great disadvantage. I'd like to think my mother is lucky to have me, but not everybody, you know, has somebody that can support them. For students, it jeopardizes an important accountability check, which I think is important, and that's if their individualized education program or IEP isn't correct, or if they were incorrectly denied one, then they can't access the education or the level of services that they deserve. So the purpose, obviously, of special education services, as you all know as best as anyone, is to make sure that education is accessible to students with disabilities, and that they're getting a free and appropriate public education per federal and state law. And if the IEP isn't right and the students don't learn, we are then going counter to our very purpose and intent. The benefits of the proposed solution, if I may, is that it promotes equity by making school districts responsible for proving the correctness of their decisions. Six states, you've heard, are already moving in this direction, given the court decision that prompted it. Statistics from those states actually put that the burden of proof on school districts show quicker resolutions. So the cost of something like this isn't in front of you. It'll go in front of the Ways and Means Committee. But I will say that what we've gathered is that it, when you, sometimes when more sophisticated actors are required to show a little bit more, they are more interested in then settling or coming to a resolution as opposed to waiting to see if the opposing party has the resources or ability to push the issue forward. So I think it really just means that we're putting a check and balance in place that we had intended prior to 2005, and it puts it back. And I want to thank the prime sponsor of the bill from before me, Senator Braun, for signing on, number two. I think you may hear from one of his constituents today that feels strongly about this issue. But for me, it just, it's a vital step towards a fair, efficient, and equitable special education due process system that benefits students, parents, and school districts. And I know every member on this committee really supports and appreciates that mission. So just thank you for hearing the bill and look forward to answering any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for the prime sponsor? No. Thank you so much for bringing the bill.
Thank you.
And then we have a joint memorial. This is Senate Joint Memorial 8007, and that is from Senator Kaufman. Would you like to come forward? And Alex, will you tell us about this piece of legislation?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members. Alex Fairfortune, staff. The joint memorial before you is SJM 8007 pertaining to IDEA funding. To provide brief background, according to a report issued by the Congressional Research Service, when Congress enacted the predecessor legislation to the IDEA in 1975, a determination was made that the federal government would pay some of the excess costs related to educating children with disabilities. Congress's final determination was that the federal government would pay up to 40% of excess costs, a metric that is sometimes referred to as full funding. However, according to that same report, IDEA funding has fallen short of this full funding amount each year from the formula's enactment, coming closest in 2009 when funding reached 35%. Funding amounts currently average around 13%. The joint memorial before you requests that Congress pass and the president sign federal legislation to fully fund 40% of the costs of the IDEA. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you very much, Alex. Any questions for Alex? Seeing none, Senator Hoffman, yes, Senator Kaufman, I'm really pleased to welcome you to the committee. I was happy to sign on to your joint memorial, and I would love to have that 40%. There's so much more we need and we could do, but please speak to your legislation.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to be here before your committee, Madam Chair, and members of the committee. For the record, I'm Claudia Kaufman, State Senator for the 47th Legislative District. And I am really here in support of a resolution requesting the state, the federal government meet its obligation and its commitment to 40%. For me, it is, it is a slap in the face that they are not funding special education to the level that they had made the commitment and to the level that they know and understand is needed for our students in all of our states. As mentioned by staff enacted in 1975 by then-President Ford, known as the Education for All Handicapped Children Act, and then later the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, has become a beacon of hope for countless families across our state and across our nation. It embodies the principles of equality and inclusive, inclusivity and justice by ensuring that every child, regardless of their ability or disability, has access to quality education in our public school system, enacted with a promise that the federal government would contribute 40% of the funding needed to support education for students with disabilities. Unfortunately, that promise has yet, has yet to be fulfilled, has yet to be fulfilled since 1975, Madam Chair, leaving states and our school districts struggling to bridge the funding gap and leaving our students behind with every year they do not fund. Our schools are the cornerstone of our society, and every child deserves the opportunity to learn. The underfunding of IDEA has placed an undue burden on our educational institutions, hindering their ability to provide the necessary resources and support for students with disabilities. It is time for us to come together and reaffirm our commitment to the principles and the obligation to the financing for IDEA and what that represents. By fully funding 40% of the cost, Congress has the power to transform the lives of millions of students with disabilities. We understand the challenges that Congress may be facing, but we firmly believe that investing in education of students, the investments of our children, our children with disabilities, is an investment in strength and resilience in our nation, in our state, in our families, and it is ensuring success for every child. I thank you for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you so much, Senator Kaufman. And Senator Kaufman, I think I'm correct in saying if you, when I first came to the Senate, the federal government had indicated that approximately of the total population, they felt that somewhere in the nature of 13 and a half percent of the children would have those special needs. Subsequently, we changed it, they reported, and we changed it aligning to 15%. And most recently, and we have a bill to that effect, most recently, the federal government is now saying that of the students that we've identified, they believe that 17 and a quarter percent of the total population is in need of these additional services. And so we, the 40% of the total that they would pay is now significantly more based on what we see as the statistics of children who have this and will benefit from this. And we know that the sooner we start, the earlier we start, and I'm so glad that we're the early learning K-12 education because we see that whole spectrum, and we know that we can start services as early as possible, the outcomes are so much better.
Right.
And so this is really important, and thank you for bringing this to our committee.
Thank you.
No question from Senator Hunt or comment?
Can I, may I comment?
Please.
As a co-sponsor of this. Just a little bit of history. In 1975, when, well, first of all, when Congress, it has a dual committee system like we do. We have, they have the authorizing committee and the appropriations committee. The authorizing committee always wants billions more than what the appropriations committee provides. This is no surprise here. But when the act passed in 1975 and the 40% was presented, it landed on a young staffer's desk for the Senate Appropriations Committee who was doing education. That was me. And, you know, the committee members just said we can't, I think we're 8% or 9% or something like that. They knew it was important, but like all authorization levels, they are rarely met. And we know now how important this 40% is, and, you know, I'm willing to add my name to it, but that's just a little history of how it came. And yes, I guess part of the blame falls on me.
Thank you.
Although I didn't have any votes.
Yeah. History is important.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I think we'll just continue with the last two bills, then presenting them to everyone, and we'll go to Senate Bill 6014, and that's Alex again.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members, Alex Fairfortune, staff. The bill before you is Senate Bill 6014 relating to increasing the special education enrollment funding cap. To provide brief background, special education is funded on an excess cost formula for up to 15% of a district's students. This formula multiplies the district's base allocation for students enrolled in K-12 education by an excess cost multiplier that varies based on the amount of time a student spends in the general education setting. The special education enrollment funding cap was increased last year through House Bill 1436 from 13.5% to 15%. Under this bill, the excess cost multiplier is increased from 15% to 17.25%. A fiscal note was requested but has not yet been received. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you so much. And any, any questions for Alex? No. Just speaking to the bill, I think you've heard, those in the audience have heard, the significant need that we have to make sure we're fully funding all those special needs that students may have. And it really is the wide spectrum. Some are just learning disabilities or different ways of learning. Some students need additional time. Some see, some need additional supplies of sorts, and it goes throughout a complete spectrum. And so I think that by changing it to what the government now is acknowledging is closer to 17 and a quarter percent. What we're also seeing, we believe, is that we're seeing enrollments reduced partly because of population growth and our, as our population is getting older. So when some kids go to private school and we don't have as many kids coming to our school system, the teach, the students that do stay, that are very committed to being in our school system, are those that are receiving, you know, special education. And so that percentage has crept up. And are there any questions for me? Hearing none, we'll go to our last bill that we hear today is Senate Bill 5956. And again, Alex, that's you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members, still Alex Fairfortune, staff. The bill before you is Senate Bill 5956 relating to enrichment levies. To provide brief background, a district's maximum enrichment levy is the lesser of $2.50 per $1,000 of assessed value, or the maximum per pupil limit, which is set at $2,500 per pupil for districts with fewer than 40,000 students, and 3,000 per pupil for districts with 40,000 or more students, which is Seattle. Under this bill, the maximum per pupil limit used to determine a district's maximum enrichment levy is changed for districts with fewer than 40,000 students. Beginning with taxes levied for collection in calendar year 2025, a district's maximum per pupil limit of 2,500 per pupil must be multiplied by the district's regionalization factor as defined in the Omnibus Appropriations Act for the prior school year. A fiscal note is available from OSPI and reflects no state expenditures as this bill pertains to local levy authority. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Alex. Any questions for Alex?
Yes, Senator Peterson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Alex, what is the range of regionalization factors that is in the current budget?
So there's currently in statute, it's 6%, 12%, and 18%. But I know that there are additional adjustments made for certain districts that have proximity to higher regionalized districts, and for districts that have higher ratios of instructional staff with more experience and advanced degrees.
Any other questions? Thank you, Alex. And for those of my fellow committee members, I'm bringing this bill because I think that we have a problem with regionalization. This is part of the McCleary fix, and as we've now played it out over a number of years, it just doesn't work, and it hasn't worked. And we've been asked to address this. Sometimes it takes a while for us to get around to addressing things, and sometimes it takes over a period of time. We don't do everything in one session. When this was brought to me, I realized that this was the first step of a phase, potentially a phase of corrections that we will need to make now that we have seen how regionalization plays out. This particular bill will not help every district. It is revenue neutral. There are some things that we need to do that will not be revenue neutral, but this is a short session, and it is, we have a lot of, this is a supplemental budget session. And so looking at the entire regionalization issue, this session was not something that I felt was responsible to do. However, I did feel we could take the first step in doing that. This bill will allow those districts to collect additional dollars beginning in 2025, and would allow districts that want to go out to hire levies to do so. Doesn't require them to do it, but it does allow them to do it. By adding the regionalization factor when calculating the district's levy capacity, communities that want to spend more on enrichment activities will have the ability to do so. And so this, this is what this is addressing, revenue neutral. A few, a few districts across the state will benefit from what they currently have. They currently have a levy that allows them to collect more, but for regionalization issues, they are not permitted to do that. This would allow them to collect more of the money that their residents have already said, yes, you can. And so it's, it's a fairly simple bill that just starts our conversations going, starts moving forward to really addressing some of the issues around regionalization that have been in... Senator Hawkins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So you mentioned revenue neutral, and of course, this is a local levy issue. So is your intent by this is some school districts will have more authority and some will have less? Or what do you mean by revenue neutral? Because certainly property taxpayers and if the, if the school district is able to ask for more, may have to pay more.
Some, some districts currently have, have been voted by their districts to enable them to get more money than they can collect because they're limited by a regionalization factor. So the, in some districts, and those are the districts that I'm addressing here, they are ready, have been voted by their constituents, a higher level than they can collect because of the regional fact, regionalization factor is limiting them. And with that, then what we'll do now in the audience, we'll go back to the first bill that we heard, and we'll start going through the bills, listening to the testimony from people remotely, and then those who are here as well. I would say we're lucky so far we have 90 seconds, so we'll try to, to stay within that. And we'll start with our first panel on Senator Braun's bill on special education safety net.
Thank you. Our first panel was in person. I'd like to call up Kelsey Hamilton, Nicole Manero, and Mikel Cheniski. And our second panel is remote, and so I'd like to also prepare Sue Ann Boob and Vivian Van Gelder.
Thank you. And Kelsey, are you first? Yeah. Got here first. Got 90 seconds. Please watch the clock. Yes.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman, members of the committee. My name is Kelsey Hamilton. I'm the school board director that Senator Braun was referring to from Chehalis. I'm here today testifying on behalf of the Washington State School Directors Association in strong support of this bill. I was able to listen to the first hearing of this committee for the 2024 session, and I really appreciated how Chairwoman kicked it off, giving the reminder that it's the job of this committee and the legislature to support the education system so each and every child that leaves our K-12 system is prepared with the things that they need to thrive. This bill helps us to do that. It enables us to access all of the safety net funds set aside for students with disabilities by allowing us to make corrections to our applications. Last year, four or more errors equaled 100% of the funds being penalized. I've heard of districts in our area that have stopped even applying for safety net funds because they don't have the people available, as some of these applications can take up to 40 hours to apply. Our special education staff are incredible, but they are strained with limited resources. Because the safety, safety net funds are often necessary for to adequately support these children, we need the process to be simple, transparent, and as collaborative as possible. OSPI feedback was incorporated into this bill, and we appreciated that they have already made some voluntary changes to reducing penalties. We ask that you pass this bill to remove all penalties so that predictable and reliable funding reimbursements allow us to continue serving our students with disabilities, giving them tools that they need to be successful, and helping us to meet our constitutional requirement.
Thank you, Kelsey. It's nice to know somebody listens. Nicole?
Yes. Thank you, Chairwoman and members of the committee. Thank you. I'm Nicole Manero, the Board President of Attorneys for Education Rights. Our members advocate for students and their families statewide. The majority of our members are attorneys for organizations that provide civil legal aid for our most vulnerable children and youth. We support 5852, reducing barriers for school districts to obtain badly needed safety net funding for highly impacted students with disabilities. The law requires not only instruction, but services such as behavioral or health, mental health services, specialist staff, paraeducators trained in behavioral intervention, staff training, even medical services if needed for a child to access an education. These services are essential for high-needs children and... These services are essential for high-needs children who remain in the classroom with their teachers and peers, the way the law that was designed for them. For students who cannot remain in the classroom, who are medically fragile in the juvenile justice system, those who cannot remain in the classroom and must be educated in specialized schools and residential treatment centers, they cannot receive an education at all without safety net funding. The need for these services is not rare. Last year, approximately 139 school districts applied for safety net funding, which is almost half of the school districts in our state. Our schools need a more accessible way to obtain this funding. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mikel? Welcome.
Hello, Madam Chair and members of the committee. Thank you so much for having me. For the record, Mikel Chineski, on behalf of the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction, we are supportive of this bill. OSPI is continuously working to improve the safety net system, both in the flexibility and then in the process. We really appreciate the sponsor bringing this bill forward, and we've, as was mentioned, already started making some changes to the proration around amounts. For this upcoming, this current school, I should say, the maximum that can be prorated is, is 20%. So before it was 40, for, you know, errors was 100%. Now that's 20. So we're, we're making progress there. We've also launched an online system for our safety net to help kind of improve and make that easier. So we look forward to getting the, the feedback from the surveys that's outlined in this bill and, and working with this, this committee and the sponsor going forward.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And we will have another panel that we're, when you hear your name, will you please put your, your camera, make sure your camera's on, but we can see you when, when we call your name and you speak up. I will also say, just because, for those of you who are out there, we try to balance and bring in pros and cons, and, and those who are remote, those who are present before us. Apparently, there were no negative voices to be heard on this, so you're hearing all positive. Not our fault, that's what you decided. So that's good. Okay, you all like it. Katie, are you there? Katie?
Hello? She's in person.
Oh, I have her as remote.
She notified her.
So panel two is Sue Ann.
Okay, just Sue Ann, Vivian. Sue Ann, are you there?
I am here.
Oh, good. Please begin your testimony.
Thank you, Madam Chair and esteemed members of the committee. My name is Dr. Sue Ann Boobie, and I'm testifying today as the Director of Special Services for Marshall Island School District and as a proud parent of a multiply handicapped, deaf, and blind child. I have worked with special education students and programs for over 20 years. I am part of the Safety Net Committee, who reviews IEPs for OSPI. I am strongly testifying as pro on behalf of my district and as a representative of the school alliance. The current safety net process requires a significant investment in time to review and adjust IEPs, and mistakes can be costly. This process also can deter smaller districts from providing necessary but needed services for the fear that they may not be reimbursed from the state. So again, I just thank you for bringing this bill forward. It will save districts an extreme amount of time. And if the state is worried about our abilities as a district to provide compliant IEPs, the state does have the wisdom process to ensure that we are compliant, and there are, there is another mechanism for state reviews. So again, thank you for reducing our workload so that we can spend more time providing the services we need for kids. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And Vivian, are you there? Vivian, welcome.
Thank you, Chairwoman and members of the committee. My name is Vivian Van Gelder. I'm a constituent in the 43rd and Vice President of the Seattle Council PTA. And we represent over 80 PTSA's and PTA's in Seattle, and we are pro on 5852. The administrative burden with the current system for safety net is tremendous. Here in Seattle, our district spends approximately $200,000 in salaries and contracts for staff just to review and process safety net. Beyond that, our special education case managers have to spend an inordinate amount of time documenting for safety net criteria rather than focusing on meeting the needs of our students. Moreover, safety net is currently a reimbursement model, and our district must set aside funding in case the paperwork error results in either a delay in reimbursement or in not being reimbursed. Yet Seattle is in a much better position than so many districts in our state. We know that small districts do not have resources like Seattle's to navigate safety net paperwork. We also know that they do have students in their communities who they want to keep in their communities and serve in their schools. We believe firmly that every child in our state deserves access to education, and that it is the paramount duty of our state to pay for that access. As our past president has testified so often, because these systems were not built for disabled people, civil rights and access costs are inextricably linked. Our history means that access to education is more expensive for some of our students. But that does not mean that those students are any less deserving. Thank you for working hard for safety net. Please pass this bill.
Thank you so much. And now we have another, you, thank you guys, and we'll bring up another in-person panel.
Thank you. I'd like to call up Michelle Whitehead, Amy Moses Lagos, and Katie Howell.
Okay, we've got, okay. And you are?
I'm Katie Howell.
Okay, Katie, please begin your testimony.
Good afternoon, Senator Wellman and members of the committee. For the record, my name is Katie Howell, and I am the Executive Director of Student Support for the Chehalis School District. I am testifying in support of Senate Bill 5852. Currently, the safety net process is time-consuming and an administrative burden, especially for smaller districts where staff fill more than one role. Since safety net funds are only available for qualified students who exceed at least two times the average per pupil expenditure, my district considers the time and effort of staff to complete safety net applications against, against the potential funding. Completing the application for students who barely surpass the threshold is usually not justifiable, and here's why. After gathering and receiving all the paperwork, such as IEPs, staffing costs, behavior intervention plans, extended school year plans, contract staff invoices, et cetera, for each student, if it is not perfect and straightforward to understand, it will likely be significantly penalized in the review process. Sometimes, simple mistakes cost thousands of dollars. For example, we had a high-needs student transfer into our district mid-year without a high school and beyond plan, and that would have resulted in a significant penalty. After hours of reviewing paperwork, tracking down documentation, and uploading everything in the system ahead of time, we hope to receive funding for the costs beyond the threshold. In Chehalis, the safety net applications are overseen by myself and the Student Support Education Specialist, and we wear many other hats, such as foster care support, overseeing 504s, all special education, and health services. This is just one of the many things that we do. I'm asking today for you to support this bill. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you so much. And I believe that, that then ends the hearing on 5852, and we will proceed to the hearing testimony on 5883, the special education hearings, Senator Trudeau's bill.
So panel one is Karen Pillar and Michelle Whitehead.
I don't know if, is that, okay. Karen?
Yes.
Please begin.
Thank you so much, Chairwoman and members of the committee. My name's Karen Pillar. I'm the Director of Policy at Team Child, which is a civil legal aid program for young people in Washington State here in support of Senate Bill 5883. We really support the shifting of the burden of proof and production to school districts during the educational disputes that can sometimes lead to due process hearings. We represent students and their parents in these disputes, and we have found that when they attempt to raise a disagreement with this, with a school district as a family of a student with a disability, they find, they face many, many barriers. As Senator Trudeau already testified to, a barrier in the ability to speak, read, and write in English, to carve out unpaid time from their jobs and care for their families to participate in this dispute process, to navigate complicated legal landscapes that require them to write interrogatories, produce evidence, cross-examine witnesses, be deposed, and make legal arguments. And so this would shift one barrier, which is the, to, appropriately to the school district. The school district holds the responsibility of producing education records. They have them, their staff get paid to show up at these, taxpayer dollars are used to pay for their attorneys. So under the current structure, really only families with wealth to hire an attorney, or the very few attorney, of families who get a civil legal aid attorney, which is a very small number, really have access to this process. It levels the playing field, and it really will result in better resolution. I think, as has been said before, it really makes it, puts a little bit of emphasis on the, on the school district's side to really come to the table and resolve them, and it will save money.
Thank you very much. Michelle, welcome.
Thank you very much. My name is Michelle Whitehead. I am in the 5th Legislative District. I'm a parent caregiver of a student with disabilities. I'm also a recipient of Team Child. I am testifying in pro of SB 5883. I have 19 years of lived experience in special education for both my girls with IEPs and 504 plans. The burden of proof should be on school districts. School districts do not track and monitor student progress enough whether the student has an IEP or not. As a single parent, the burden of proof on me has wreaked havoc in my life. It has caused me to quit working full-time in order to manage my daughter's affairs. I have had to request a ton of public records, FERPA records, then compile the records and prove that my daughter is not being served or the IEP is not robust enough. As a very low-income parent, I am not in the financial position to hire attorneys. Districts have unlimited public taxpayer funds to fight parents. This inequitable system needs to change. Education is a civil right. Faith cannot happen until the system changes. I ask you for your support on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. I know sometimes it's challenging to get here. Appreciate your coming.
Thanks so much for your testimony, and we're ready for panel number two is remote. Ramona Hatendorf, Samantha Fogg, Stacy Dim, and Michelle Campbell.
And?
So if you could promote yourself and turn your camera on, and Ramona, you want to start to speak, we should be able to see you.
Okay, thank you so much. Good afternoon, Chairwoman and committee members. I'm Ramona Hatendorf, Public Policy Director with the Ark of King County. We help thousands of people with disabilities navigate systems, and the key area is special education. We support this bill. We believe it's better for kids. Access to education all comes down to that IEP. Statistics from states that put the burden of proof on school districts, so it leads to quicker resolution of disputes, and that students receive appropriate educational services much sooner. We also did statewide surveying this fall with the Ark of Washington on disability services, and everything was on the table. Many families flagged concerns with long-term care and housing, but people identifying as disabled and people identifying as Black, Indigenous, or a person of color, finding inequity in public schools as big as concerns, specifically changing burden of proof, was a top legislative issue for BIPOC families. So as you've heard and will hear, this affects families with disabilities deeply, and it especially affects those who experience more bias. That IEP can open or shut doors, and it affects lifelong well-being. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Samantha Fogg?
Chairwoman and members of the committee, for the record, my name is Samantha Fogg, a constituent in the 46th and immediate past president of Seattle Council PTA, testifying pro. Our families are experts on their children, but when it comes to due process, it is our districts who hold all the power and who have the information that our families need. Most of our families are not experts in special education law. Our families, our families typically do not have access to the information they need to prove that their child is not being served. Proving a negative is already hard, but it is our districts who know how many minutes have actually been served. It is our districts who have experts. It is our districts who have lawyers on retainer. Our families typically don't have any of those things. They're caring for their child, they're going to work, and now they're trying to learn to be lawyers, and they're trying to learn to be experts in special education, just to prove that their child is not getting what they need. We'd love to have a system where the burden of proof is on the district so that the district can show our families that our students are being served. We thank you for considering this bill, and we really do ask that you pass it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Samantha. Stacy, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairmembers of the committee. I'm Stacy Dim. I live in the 37th Legislative District, and I'm Executive Director at the Ark of Washington State located in the 22nd Legislative District, testifying in favor of SB 5883. This important bill changes very simply how IDEA administrative due process hearings are conducted, most of which are initiated by parents, because strongly their disabled child is not learning, and in many cases, is being harmed by a lack of services or how services are implemented at their child's school. There's a lot of mythology associated with this simple change. This is not jackpot litigation. Parents do not receive money for their child's education or create trust bonds from money awarded as damages. In an IDEA hearing, they only receive services for their child if they prevail. This change will not result in opening the floodgates to mass litigation against school districts. There is still going to be significant cost to a hearing, and many parents will still not have the means or the resources. Families of children with disabilities are twice as likely to live in poverty, and they also don't have access to an attorney paid by an insurance pool with the power and expertise to defend their plan. More often than not, a parent represents themselves in a due process hearing. So for those families who do not ask, who do ask to present their case, they will have an equitable chance of showing their concerns of what their child needs with this shift. School districts and their lawyers should feel confident in their plan and be required to prove that by 51% of the evidence. Thank you, and please pass this important bill out of committee.
Thank you so much. Michelle?
Chairwoman and members of the committee, for the record, my name is Michelle Campbell, constituent in the 46th, testifying pro today as a parent of a student who qualifies for an IEP, failed by the system, and initially denied an evaluation. I, I have the ability to fight for my child's, my child's right to ask, access basic education, and when she finally was evaluated, she qualified in five areas. Getting to this point, however, was incredibly exhausting and overwhelming, in part because I felt that I could not file due process due to the burden of proof. I didn't have access to the information that the school district had, information that I needed to advocate effectively for my child. Essential time was wasted as the school continued to tell me that everything I was seeing with my child was typical behavior. This took an emotional toll on our family. Once the evaluation and IEP process began, anxiety and trauma set in as undiagnosed disabilities for myself were also realized. This is not uncommon, and it created yet another barrier to filing for due process. The executive function and available time needed to sift through emails and public record requests and search for a lawyer we might not be able to afford, all while caring for a student being failed, was just not there. If this, if the school team had known that I could file due process and that they would have, and that they would have to prove that they were serving my child, it is my belief that she would have been served more quickly. Unfortunately, due process meant to bring resolution just didn't feel like an option. Please shift the burden of proof to districts.
Thank you so much.
All right, we have panel three is remote, and that is Melissa Spiker, Lisa Brodoff, and Sue Ann Boob. And while they're coming up, I just want to say, we have a number of scholars in the audience, and
No.
They are incredibly attentive and to this most exciting testimony that you might be hearing. I just want to say thanks all for being here.
Very well behaved.
I see you very well behaved, and I appreciate your attendance today.
Melissa, are you there?
I am here. Hi, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Hi, thank, thank you so much, Madam Chair and committee members. My name is Melissa Spiker. I am in the 34th Legislative District and currently serving the Seattle Special Education PTA as Advocacy Chair. The burden of proof refers to the burden of providing evidence that is more persuasive than the evidence provided by the other party. We believe this to be a harm reduction policy. Schools are expected already to justify changes to the IEP team meetings during the, the meetings that families attend with educators. If there is not a consensus agreeing with the proposed changes, the same information can be provided to an administrative law judge without added risk or harm to districts. A neutral fact-finder can be persuaded whether the requirements of a free and appropriate education are being met. The Supreme Court specifically states that states should retain the right to decide how to handle burden of proof as a states' right issue. And we implore the state of Washington to protect our students and families and make this process more equitable in the process. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Lisa?
Thank you, members of the committee. I'm an emeritus professor at Seattle University School of Law, and in my capacity as a professor, I've represented parents and disabled children and advocates to change the burden of proof in these special education hearings. So why is it a problem for parents and their children to have the burden of proof in hearings? Parents don't have particular expertise on education planning. They just know that their child is not progressing, they know something is wrong, their child is miserable, and it's heartbreaking.
Thank you, members of the committee. I'm an emeritus professor at Seattle University School of Law, and in my capacity as a professor, I've represented parents and disabled children and advocates to change the burden of proof in these special education hearings. So why is it a problem for parents and their children to have the burden of proof in hearings? Parents don't have particular expertise on education planning. They just know that their child is not progressing. They know something is wrong. Their child is miserable, and it's heartbreaking. The parents are not often represented in these hearings, and they don't know how to put on evidence, deal with exhibits, cross-examine witnesses, and research complex areas of law. On the other hand, the school district is always represented. It has the power, the information, and the expertise to defend its plan. Seven other states have already agreed with this analysis and have changed the burden of proof to school districts. Most recently, New Hampshire Legislature unanimously passed a bipartisan bill shifting the burden of proof to school districts, all saying it leveled the playing field. Now Washington State should follow New Hampshire's lead and place the burden on the school district that created the plan and has the expertise to defend it. Please vote this important bill out. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I hope it will be a bipartisan bill. Sue Ann?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the committee. My name is Dr. Sue Ann Boobee, and I am testifying today as both a proud parent of a deaf and blind child and as the Director of Special Services from our Sherrill School District. I have worked with special education students and programs for over 20 years. I'm testifying as other on behalf of my district and as a representative of the school alliance. First, we understand that the bill was crafted with good intentions, and we support the efforts to increase transparency. However, the added administration workload for our already stretched thin staff and the increased costs of lawsuits would create major problems for our programs. The focus on legal proceedings in this bill detracts from our primary mission, providing a free and appropriate public education to all students, especially those with disabilities. Second, the bill does not adequately consider the diverse needs and capabilities of districts across our state. What might be feasible for a large, well-funded district could be crippling for smaller rural districts. We are creating a disparity in the equality and the quality of special education, widening the gap between different communities. Third, the United States Supreme Court has already determined who should be responsible for the burden of proof. In conclusion, please consider the practical implications of this bill and the decision of the Supreme Court. A reallocation of funds from other essential programs to meet administrative costing demands of lawsuits does not benefit our students. Please work with us to bolster our ability to support all students without imposing excessive burdens. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Boobee. We can talk offline, since we're practically neighbors. Okay. And then we'll come to our final panel, also remote.
So Andrea, I'm sorry, Andrea Cadlec, Yana Parker, Jen Jewel Chong, and April Ferguson. And Andrea, if you would turn your camera on and begin to speak, we should be able to see you.
Thank you. Can you see me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thank you, Chair Wellman and honorable committee members. My name is Andrea Cadlec, and I'm an attorney at Disability Rights Washington. Most families don't want litigation, but litigation is vital to the case law that reshapes how we educate our students. So it's important to think about equal access to due process and to the law. I know parents who have taken second mortgages or depleted their children's trust fund to pay for legal representation and due process proceedings. The cost is great, and most families do not have that capacity. Parents spend thousands to hire experts or acquire educational evaluations. Schools have experts and resources at their disposal and an insurance pool for litigation expenses. Parents who cannot access an attorney are faced with complex litigation and miss work to do so, whereas school staff are often paid for their time in litigation proceedings. If the only families who have access to litigation are families with financial means and attorneys, then we are promulgating law without the voices or representation of families furthest from educational justice. Shifting the burden of proof to school districts will generate a more equitable playing field and remedy an imbalance of power, incorporating diverse and underrepresented voices in the evolution of education law. Please support Senate Bill 5883. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yana. Welcome, Yana.
Hi. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the committee. My name is Yana Parker from the 34th Legislative District. I'm here today to testify as a parent, serving as a co-president on the Seattle Special Education PTSA, a district-wide PTSA. We strongly support this bill, and I am a parent of students with disabilities in public schools. As I said, the difficulties we have come across are not an isolated issue or unique to our current school or the district. Parents are forced to become fierce advocates to protect their children and their civil rights. They often spend money to be able to get what is supposedly free, appropriate public education. A couple of years ago, my family spent two annual incomes on legal fees for a due process, just to take a chance at making things right for our son. The district whose administrator just testified was found in violation of IDEA on various counts. But we didn't win, and we were not able to recover those fees. It became hard to put food on the table. At the end of the process, the district laid off my husband after nearly 17 years of exceptional service, supposedly due to budget cuts. We didn't have access to the records that the district had, and the district would not allow us to record school meetings, despite knowing that I am a protected class under the ADA. This meant that there was no sufficient record available for us to succeed in protecting our son's rights. We will be submitting additional testimony. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate that. We'll look forward to that and distribute it. Jen Jewel?
Thank you, Chair Wellman and members of the committee. My name is Jen Chong Jewel. I serve as the Executive Vice Chair of the Special Education Advisory Council, or CIAC for OSPI. CIAC is established as a requirement for the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act and in state law to advise the state on the provision of special education services to students with disabilities. Administrative burden is a term that encompasses the information and learning costs, compliance costs, psychological costs, and redemption costs that are incurred by families and students attempting to navigate complex and siloed systems such as public education and special education services. And really, the use of this term should be reserved for those who are historically underserved, not used by professionals responsible for administration of programs. The CIAC believes to be equitable and to address the administrative burden that exists for students and their families, the burden of proof needs to be assigned to the school or local education agency. We studied this issue as a council, and we engaged on this topic from many angles. As stated, other states have done this. We know ultimately, when disputes get to this process, it is usually the last option, and it has come at a heavy cost for all parties involved. However, what is not disputed is that students and families shoulder the ongoing and relentless administrative burden. Thank you for moving this bill out of committee.
Thank you very much. And finally, April is our last testifier.
My name is April Ferguson. I am a mother of a 15-year-old autistic boy who has four years, for four years has not had a free, appropriate public education, as he has a right to. In June, I completed a 17-day due process hearing. I was self-represented. Despite our efforts, my son was awarded just over 1,000 educational hours to compensate for four lost years. The system's inequities became evident as we struggled to meet the burden on certain issues where the school district held all the cards, and witnesses were biased against us, his parents. Every person I could call to support our case, except his doctor, was labeled a hostile witness, declared a hostile witness, due to their employment with the school district. Progress records produced by the same staff inaccurately reflected his development, leaving us with minimal evidence to track academic progress. The system's inherent disadvantage made it an issue for us to prove they were not meeting his IEP, as they had control over records, teachers, and the educational systems. Shouldn't the responsibility lie with them to demonstrate compliance with providing my son education and meeting his IEP requirements? As parents of children with developmental disabilities, our journey through our kids' educational years is marred by the absence of joyful moments with fellow parents at school events and PTSA gatherings. Instead, we find ourselves immersed in relentless cycles of writing emails, making phone calls, and meticulously documenting IEP meetings. These years are overshadowed by the weight of our struggle to ensure that our children's rights are acknowledged and met. Our path is marked by-
I need you to wind up, please.
I'm on the closing. Our path is marked by sorrowful memories, ongoing battles, and the profound trauma experienced by both our children and ourselves. Please make the changes needed to bring accountability to the districts and to make the system more equitable and just for our families. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that ends the testimony on 5883, and we will move to testimony on the Joint Memorial 8007, and we have in person.
Thank you, Chair. In person, I'd like to call up Lisa Keating and Michelle Whitehead, and also prepare Samantha Fogg remotely.
Lisa, you want to start? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to speak, Chair Wellman and committee members. My name is Lisa Keating. I'm the President of the Tacoma School Board and Chair for WASDA, the WASDA Federal Network Relations Committee, also known as FRN. In the four years I have been a member of the FRN Committee, we have advocated with the Washington State Federal delegation on fully funding their portion of IDEA at 40%. This specific advocacy has been taking place for decades, so we fully support SJM 8007, and appreciate you bringing attention to this issue. We also ask that you continue to attend to the state's responsibility to fully funding for 60% of special education. As a result of neither the federal government nor the state meeting their fiscal obligations, school districts are forced to use local levy tax dollars intended for enrichment and not basic education. Costs have skyrocketed. In Tacoma, we are going to be paying over $500,000 for one student who cannot be in a typical learning environment. In the 2022 through 2023 school year, there was a $529.2 million shortfall between the state and federal government. My fellow school directors and I will continue to be trusted partners with the legislature and our federal delegation in meeting the needs of our students with disabilities. It is vital to each Washington student that both state and federal governments fund required portions of SPED and IDEA. Thank you.
Thank you. And Michelle?
Thank you. My name is Michelle Whitehead again. I am in the 5th Legislative District. I am testifying in pro requesting Congress to fully fund 40% of the costs of IDEA. I'm the parent of a student with disabilities who has been underserved in a very affluent school district. The IDEA law started in Washington State 50 years ago. We are still here 50 years later, and children with disabilities are still being underserved. Free and appropriate public education is still not happening due to lack of funding, lack of appropriate school placement, placement options, lack of training, lack of staff, lack of understanding of the IDEA. While this law is outdated and needs to be revamped, these children cannot wait to be served. There is no sense of urgency in this educational system. This should be a fire on fire of how much school children have missed and the lack of progress they made. I ask for you to support this bill, SJM 8007. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Michelle. And we'll go to our last test-
Yes, I'm so sorry. Go ahead, Senator Hunt. Just a quick question. I'd like you to repeat that cost for that one student.
It's actually $507,000.
A year.
Through over, I believe it's going to be over a two-year period.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We do have, I know of one small school district, Senator Hunt, that has two children, each a million dollars in out-of-state costs. So it's not unusual. Okay, and Samantha Fogg?
Chair Wellman and members of the committee, for the record, my name is Samantha Fogg, constituent in the 46th, an immediate past president of Seattle Council PTSA. We represent over 80 PTAs and PTSAs in Seattle, and on their behalf, I am testifying pro. Last year, we had a lot of discussion with all of you around the multiplier, and I want to thank you for your additional investment in special education. But one of the things that I learned during that process is that the amount that we were asking for, the amount that is different between what districts were paying for special education and what they were receiving from the state, that amount is equal to the amount that the federal government is supposed to be contributing. And I was stunned that that was so nice and neat. I also want to say that I've been advocating on this issue at the federal level as well, and what we hear consistently is, they need to hear more. They need to hear more voices. They need more pressure. And I see this as more pressure from you, and I really look forward to being in partnership with you, advocating at the federal level for the funding that our state needs, that our districts need, that our students need to access that basic education. Because we all know that this is about the civil rights of our students and honoring the intent of IDEA. Our federal government has an obligation, and I thank you for making sure that you put the pressure on them to meet that obligation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll go to, now to Senate Bill 6014, the cap on special education. This bill raises it, as you may not remember, to 17 and 1/4% from just last year's 15%. So our first panel. Who's calling the panels?
First panel is Maddy Thompson, Brian Vetcher, and Lizzie Sebring.
So we must have the governor's voice at the table to that right now. Maddy Thompson?
Thank you, Chair Wellman and members of the committee. For the record, my name's Maddy Thompson. Thank you for sponsoring this OFM request bill. This bill matches the governor's investment in special education. It's our understanding that it increases the funding above the state average to help out those districts who are, our state average is currently at 15%. The governor has consistently provided additional incremental funds in his proposed budgets, and thanks to you, much of that has been funded. At the beginning of the governor's terms, it's special education funding totaled about $2 billion. It's now increased to nearly $4.4 billion. That's significant investment, but we've still got a long way to go. A lot of kids, as you've heard, are quite expensive in terms of the supports that they need, and we want to certainly provide those supports. This pairs well with the governor's proposed funding to expand para-educator funding, because many of those para-educators are also providing supports that students need in special education. I appreciate your support. And Brian Vetcher is here in case you have any technical questions. Thank you.
Good. Brian?
Yes. We have questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Maddy, could you, I'm guessing you guys have like a back of the envelope guess. I know the official fiscal note isn't out yet, but do you have a rough?
Well, it's in the governor's budget, and I'll defer to Brian to answer that question.
Brian?
Brian Vetcher, for the record, OFM Budget Advisor for K-12. We're still kind of going back and forth, and you know, we're gonna rely in the coming months on the freshest data, but the shorthand sort of back of the envelope we came up with was about $20 to $22 million a year for the 17.25%, and then about double that if we were to lift the cap entirely.
And do you have any other testimony that you'd like to continue with?
I'll just echo what Maddy Thompson said and throw my support behind this bill.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Lizzie.
Good afternoon, Chair Wellman and members of the committee. I am Lizzie Sebring, immediate past advocacy director of the Washington State PTA, and a parent in the 44th Legislative District with two children who receive special education services. School districts have a legal obligation to serve all students with disabilities. While we appreciate the increase in the cap to 17.25%, what our members have asked is for the cap to be removed completely. According to our review of the 2022-23 data, 2/3 or 196 school districts are above the 15% cap. At the proposed 17.25%, 113 districts would remain above the cap. For these districts, they have to rely on local levies or LEA funds to help close the gap. Capping a district's ability to provide the necessary services for students with disabilities tells our students, including my children, that providing services and meeting their needs is not a priority. That cannot be allowed to continue. PTA members ask you to completely remove the arbitrary cap and make sure that all students have access to the services and supports that they need to be successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, and let me just say that I have, as Chair of the- Yes, and let me just say that I have, as Chair of the Committee, I have some responsibility for maintaining the cap. I also sit on EOGOAC, which is the Opportunity Gap Committee, which analyzes everything that we do in our education systems to see if it seems as though it's equitable, if there are populations that are not getting a fair shake. And one of the things that we have found are, is the fact that unfortunately, there are or have been cases where certain students, because they were disruptive in the classroom, while one person of a particular race, while disruptive, would be considered, we need to put, you know, a little more help on this hand, or whatever, and on another student of a different race might be, let's send them to special ed, they'll take care of it. I think it's really important to make sure that the people who are getting the services are people who need these specific services and for not any other reason. And right now, I'm not totally convinced that we can just open the door and say everybody who needs it or who is deemed to need it is getting it for the right reasons, that they actually do need it. It does come with a label, and I know personally, both as someone who has a specialization in learning disabilities, as a former teacher way back in the day, is that being labeled can also be a handicap, and that can really result in how other people see you, perhaps inadvertently, inappropriately. And so, not quite ready to be there yet, but I do appreciate your perspective. Thank you.
All right, we have another panel that's remote, Michelle Campbell, Carl Carey. And while we're finding them remotely, Steve Bigelow, Julie Salvi, and Nicole Manero might make their way up and be ready to testify in person.
Is Jessie now?
And Jessie Marino-Graham is not in, on Zoom.
Okay. So we have Michelle.
Yeah, Michelle Campbell, if you want to turn your camera on and begin to speak, we should be able to see you.
Hello, Michelle. Yeah, there you go. Thank you.
Chair Wellman and members of the committee, for the record, my name is Michelle Campbell, constituent in the 46th, testifying other on behalf of Seattle Council PTSA. I'm a parent of a student who qualifies for an IEP who was failed by the system and initially denied an evaluation. I had the ability to fight for my child's right to access education, and when she was finally evaluated, she qualified in five areas. Was my child denied an evaluation directly based on the cap, indirectly due to lack of resources because of the cap, or was it some other failure? The idea of limiting the number of children that you fund basic education for is abhorrent. It's insulting. You would be lucky to have an entire district filled with children exactly like mine. At 17.25%, you will still not be funding access to a basic education based solely on the fact of disability for children in 113 school districts. If you look at this strictly as a budgetary issue, which we do not, 17.25% provides much more needed funding for our districts. However, Seattle Council PTSA urges you to stop debating what the right number of disabled children is and to focus your work on including, identifying, and educating all students in Washington schools. Thank you.
Thank you. And Carl?
Chair Wellman and members of the committee, my name is Carl Carey, and I serve as Director for the Grand Falls School District. On behalf of WASDA in my district, I thank you for your past actions in increasing special education funding. Your investment last session was a beacon of hope for our community, illuminating the path for our most vulnerable students. In granite, special education is not just a program, it's a promise to 20.9% of our students receiving SED services that they matter. Your previous investment brought in an additional $650,000, a monumental step in fulfilling that promise. However, the journey is far from over, and that is why we are in strong support of 6014. I humbly state the reality that our 2,247 students need equitable funding. Our current unfunded SED costs are a staggering $2.4 million. A complete elimination of the cap for us would make all other components of the existing funding model work. Despite our efforts to economize due to high-impact students moving into our district, our costs have increased by $1.4 million this school year. This bill is our hope for a more sustainable future. It's a call to action for the betterment of every child who walks through our doors seeking knowledge, support, and acceptance. Please pass 6014 to continue the work to expeditiously completely remove the cap. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we have an in-person panel?
Student.
Okay. Oh, they're right here. Thank you so much. Okay, Steve, we'll start with you.
So efficient. Wow.
All right. Thank you so much for your time today. My name is Steve Bigelow. I'm Executive Director at the Capital Region EST 113. I'm here in support of Senate Bill 6014 and the proposed funding cap increase. We have found, oh, on January 13th, you received an email from Troy Nichols that sent you a display that's related to my testimony today. It shows 118 districts that were above the 15% cap last year. We have found in our research that the funding cap is inequitable because it disproportionately impacts students living in rural regions of the state. We reviewed enrollment data from last year for educational entities in Washington, including school districts, charters, and tribal compact schools. As you can see in the chart that we provided, there were 118 entities that were above the 15% cap last year. Of those, 88 were in rural locales or in township locales, with an average enrollment size of 777 students. So in sum, 74% of the educational entities in our state that were over the 15% cap were smaller districts in rural regions. These data clearly show the special education funding cap disproportionately impacts students in rural regions of our state, and smaller districts already have disadvantages in terms of resources. It's harder for them to find special education staff, and when they do, they often are more costly than in larger districts. For example, they may need to pay travel expenses for a speech pathologist to drive over an hour to their district, or if teletherapy is their only option, they need to hire additional paraprofessional time to support the students on site. The funding cap artificially limits their ability to provide student services they need for success in school. And while we would like to see the funding cap eventually removed, we strongly support this as the next step.
Thank you very much. And we'll go right to Julie.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the committee. For the record, I'm Julie Salvi with the Washington Education Association, speaking in favor of the bill today. As you have heard from so many other panelists, we see greater needs in the special ed system, and we appreciate this step in continuing your efforts to review and improve the funding formulas. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your swift testimony. And Nicole?
Thank you, Chair Wellman and members of the committee. I am Nicole Manero, President of the Attorneys for Education Rights, and I'm here in support of Senate Bill 6014. As you heard before, our members advocate for children throughout the state, including students with disabilities who receive special education services. We know that our state constitution guarantees a basic education for all students, and for children with disabilities, that must include the instructions, supports, and services that federal and state law says they need and are entitled to, all 143,000 of them, each and every one. While we know that any cap on special education funding should not be allowed by law, we support this bill because we advocate for any increase in funding that puts us in sight of meeting this goal for our disabled children and youth. The current cap leaves out so many students who reside in districts with a higher percentage of students with disabilities than the average, as you have heard. This includes our military families assigned near children's hospitals for their medically fragile children. Their school districts naturally have a higher percentage of students who need special education. Our children and youth with disabilities are not averages. They are individuals, and we should not have a funding system that treats them this way. You must act to right this wrong. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, panel.
All right. The next panel in person is Melinda Swedberg, Mikael Cherniski, and Charlie Brown. And while they're making their way up, Darcy Huffman, Michelle Whitehead, Colette Paulson, and Jeff Thake. If you want to take some seats in the front row and be ready to have your turn, we're just gonna speed things up a bit to make sure we have all testimony on all of our bills.
Okay, so we have, Melinda is here first. Yes. Hello, Melinda.
Hi. I'm Mindy Swedberg, and I'm the PE Specialist at McKenney Elementary, just three miles that way. Yes, the same McKenney that is at risk of being permanently closed because the Olympia School District has to pay for SED costs out of our levy money instead of running schools. You all are experts at knowing the ins and outs of bills and how to get them passed. And me, I'm an expert at giving 25 six-year-olds baseball bats and hoping for the best. Just kidding, I assure you, my classrooms are very safe. As a teacher, I see how transformative education can be and the trickle effect to communities, cities, and states, but we need adequate funding to have that transformative power, especially when providing supports for our vulnerable populations. SED teachers are quitting because their caseloads are too high and the burnout is real. Our enrichment options are suffering because we, as a district, choose to prioritize SED as we should be doing. But new curriculum, we can't afford it. Ban for 4th grade, it's now too expensive. Keeps all schools open so that we can impact kids in their direct neighborhoods? To be determined. But what is currently determined is that the Olympia School District is forced to support basic and required education before we can even afford to do any of the really cool stuff that helps kids feel connected to their schools and retains their enrollment to get them graduated. Really, SED needs to be fully funded, but we'll take the small increase if that's the best offer on the table because it gives us the greatest chance of impacting our students' lives for the better. So please stand behind these students, my students. Please support our schools, my school. Support our future and pass this bill.
Thank you very much, Mikael.
Hi. Thank you, Chair Wellman and members of the committee. For the record, Mikael Cherniski, on behalf of the Office of Superintendent and Public Instruction. Much of what I was gonna say has already been covered by the previous folks, so I'll just keep it brief. We support this bill. We had a decision package this fall to go all the way and remove the cap, and I humbly ask that you look into that. There's still, you know, around 50 school districts that would be above this new cap at 17.25, and these are really small school districts, averaging enrollment about 650. So I urge that, and I thank you for your time, and thank you for pressing this issue.
Thank you, and I would appreciate it if you would, and perhaps you already have, I don't know, but look at the disaggregated information about who is being, receiving special ed services across the state and the proportions of different groups.
Absolutely.
It just jumped out, but I'd love to have your input on that.
Thank you.
Charlie?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the committee. I am Charlie Brown. I'm here today on behalf of the Clover Park School District. Clover Park sits right in the heart of Lakewood in the Pierce County area, and it is the feeder school for JBLM. I think, Madam Chair, you and your committee members all know that the military installations look for school districts that have really high-quality special education programs, and they send a lot of their staff there. So as a result, school districts like JBLM end up with quite a bit more students that are of special ed, need special ed services. So I commend this bill to you. Thank you very much for bringing it forward, Madam Chair. Thank you to the governor for putting it in his budget, and for OFM for bringing it forward. This is an important issue. We would like to see this cap issue dealt with. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And we're ready with the next panel. And we have, we have one more after that. You have Darcy.
We do have our last panel. I apologize for that.
Just come right up.
Darcy Huffman, Michelle Whitehead, Colette Paulson, and Jeff Thake.
And then there's one more after that.
And whoever gets seated first can go first. It looks like Michelle Whitehead.
Michelle Whitehead, go ahead.
Thank you very much. My name is Michelle Whitehead. I'm in the 5th Legislative District. I am testifying in pro of 6014. The formula for special education funding cap has not met the need for many years. My daughter has been the recipient of three out-of-district school placements. These are called non-public agencies. These schools require transportation and special contracts to be written up. These special education costs are very expensive, and the districts are consistently and constantly limiting or denying services, placements, or additional supports, including para-educators and tutoring due to the costs. The Washington State Constitution says it is our paramount duty to provide a free and appropriate public education, which is a basic education. Our funding priorities have not reflected this. Please raise the funding cap so these students don't have limits on their future and their educational opportunities. Thank you.
Excuse me, let me ask you a question, please. So you mentioned the transportation. Is the school district providing the transportation to a special school that is outside of the school district?
Yes, correct, but there are no school bus drivers. There's no school buses. So that means that she's transported by hop, skip, drive. It's very expensive. It's a children's Uber service.
Yes. All right. Well, we are addressing our transportation for education this session, and we may have to look into that. Thank you for bringing it to my attention. Is it Gina? No.
Colette.
Colette. Well, go ahead, Colette.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you all today. My name is Colette Paulson, and I'm a parent of three elementary students here in Olympia at Margaret McKenney, and I'm here today in strong support of Senate Bill 6014. I'm not gonna lie, I'm pretty far out on this giddy branch right now, and I've been trying to figure out what I could say that might make the biggest difference in moving this bill forward. Because I'm just a mom. I'm not a doctor, I'm not an educator. I'm just a mom who recognizes the importance of meeting all students where they're at and making access to special education equitable. Because I have firsthand experience with how vital special education is to students, since my family has a student with special needs. My five-year-old has a significant speech delay. He started preschool only making sounds, no words, just sounds. But we're fortunate that he receives speech therapy while at school with his fantastic speech teacher, Teacher Alex. For the past two years, he's worked with her, and he's gone from just sounds to putting together two, sometimes even three words. And that might not seem like much progress, but this kid has grown so much. And he has access to those services because we live in a school district that uses their enrichment levy to make up for the gap in special education funding. This isn't the case for all school districts. Some can't fully fund education, special education through enrichment levy and/or other resources, and that leads to an ineptible system. Special education is not an enrichment. I'm gonna say that again. Special education is not an enrichment. It is based education right that when school districts have to fund themselves, leads to students' needs not being met. Please help our most vulnerable students and fully support 6014 and move this legislation forward. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Senator Wellman, can I just say something?
Yes, please.
Number one, you're not just a mom. You know your child better than anybody else. I just need to tell you that. Better than anybody else.
Darcy?
Yes.
Darcy.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Wellman and members of the committee. I am Darcy Huffman. I am the School Board Director for the Olympia School District, testifying before you in support of Senate Bill 6014. While I would prefer to see the special education funding gap removed altogether, I am well aware that you have many difficult decisions regarding funding for a plethora of critically important programs for our state, and so I thank you for considering this one. My school district is one of the highest number of special needs students in the state, with this year over 18% of our students receiving some type of special education. With the cap currently at 15%, and thank you very much for the increase, there still remains more than a 3% gap in state funding, and this puts an enormous strain on our budget. For the next school year, we are looking at reducing or cutting programs like coaches for our special ed teachers, social workers, and our early childhood administrator. And yes, we are looking at closing two of our neighborhood schools as well. Many of the parents and the kids that you see in here today are from one of those schools. I'll be honest that the McClary fix broke the funding system for the Olympia School District and many others like us. Fully funding special education would be a great step forward, not only for our district, but more importantly, for our students, because it really is all about the kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff?
Yes. Yeah. Senator Wellman, members of the committee, thank you so much for allowing me to speak. And also, Senator Wilson, thank you for pronouncing my last name correctly. I appreciate that as well. All right. My name is Jeff Thake. I am the Superintendent of the Aberdeen School District. Last year was my first year in Aberdeen and my first year as a superintendent in the state of Washington. I am here as an advocate for our Aberdeen children with special needs, which represents 19.8% of our student population. I'm here to testify in support of increasing the cap for special education funding. Inadequate funding has put a strain on our special education programs, making it difficult to thrive. As the Superintendent of the largest school district in the Grays Harbor and Pacific County region, we also have the largest population of students with special needs in our area. Not only has our special education student enrollment increased, but the needs of the students we serve has significantly increased. This includes providing professional development programs and services, updating instructional materials and technologies. And last year, due to an increase in population, we created additional sections for autism in our district. By increasing funding for special education, we can address these challenges and ensure every student, regardless of their abilities, has access to the resources and support they need to succeed to enhance the culture of acceptance and diversity that benefits all students. I'm pleased that in I'm pleased that an increase in funding from 15% to 17 and 1/4 for special education is being discussed. The proposal decreases the gap between special education funding and Aberdeen's special education population that sits at 19.8%. And that is my testimony. Thank you very much for hearing me. I saw the red light go on, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming. It's not an easy trip out from Aberdeen, but beautiful area. Thank you very much.
Yes, right.
And that concludes our testimony for 6014 and our final bill of the day, 5956. We have our first panel in person. Well, this is exciting. We have our Superintendent of Public Instruction, Chris Reichtal. We might even give you an extra 30 seconds.
Oh, my God. There may be a chamber that subtracts 30 seconds. I can't commit to one, or the other.
No.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee. I'm State Superintendent Chris Reichtal. Thank you for hearing this bill. I think there were three significant challenges in the original levy proposal post-McLeary. Number one is adequacy. There was no constitutional requirement or court order to reduce levies. It was a political choice. I think we understood it. It's having significant impacts. Number two, you now have a scenario where you recognize the cost in high-cost districts, and you regionalized your state dollars. You knew it costs more to have a teacher live and thrive in Seattle than it does in rural Washington, but the exact same kind of employee is paid for with levy dollars, and they weren't regionalized. That's what this bill attempts to do. It's a narrow thing that attempts to do that. The third thing that we will have to get to eventually is you now have two districts that can both exist with exactly the same number of students, both lost 100 enrollments. The district that's tied to the per-thousand model gets to keep growing their levy, and the district that's tied to the per-kid model now has to go to their voters and collect less levy. That's what we did in the post-McLeary levy model that was created. So levies are broken in the state. It wasn't a great solution, but it was an understandable political choice. As you used the state property tax, you wanted to offer some local tax relief. Unfortunately, it's had significant consequences. This bill specifically takes on one thing, just regionalize so that at least those who can benefit from that do. You will hear lots of testimony from folks who see the complexity of this and want a more comprehensive state solution, and others who would say, "I don't like it because if they can get it, I should get it." That's a levy equalization conversation, which we also support significantly, that you consider additional LEA for districts who don't have the property value or the votes to do it. But this one thing has to get solved. You created the idea of regionalization. It should be considered in levies as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Chris? No, thank you so much for understanding. It is our hope, you know, many issues don't get solved in one session, especially a short session that's a supplemental year. So we're trying hard with this little thing and committed to the next one.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. We have a remote panel.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to call remotely Jackie Bryan, Kate Davis, and Jan Fuller, and also call up our next in-person panel, Melissa Gomboski, Dan Steele, Charlie Brown, and Melissa Beard.
Okay. On the remote TV, we have Jackie. Are you there?
I'm here. Thank you.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Chair Wellman and members of the committee. My name is Jackie Bryan, Chief Financial Officer for Highline Public Schools. I am here testifying in favor of Bill 5956. This bill would provide Highline Public Schools access to levy dollars already voted on and approved by our voters. These local dollars would help address an increasing structural deficiency in funding within Highline. As a district, we anticipate reductions of over $16 million in the coming years, with a reduction of a minimum of $8 million in 2024-25. This bill would allow us to collect close to $10 million of approved local dollars, allowing Highline to continue providing essential services to all our students. In addition, we encourage the legislature to include LEA funding within the bill to ensure a holistic solution for all students in Washington State. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you so much. And Kate, we'll go next to you.
Thank you, Chair Wellman and members of the committee. I'm Kate Davis, Executive Director of Finance.
We're having a little bit of a problem with your transmission. Do you want to try speaking without your camera on? We lost you, Kate.
She fully dropped.
She dropped.
She dropped off.
Okay, we'll move to Jane, and we'll try to, if Kelly comes back, if Kate comes back, we'll pick her up. Jane Fuller.
Good afternoon, Chair Wellman and members of the committee. My name is Jane Fuller. I am Chair of the San Juan County Council, District 40, and reside with my husband and school-aged daughter on Lopez Island. If I may call out two troubling myths among legislators in our state about life in San Juan County relevant to public education. Myth one, our imagined utopia of San Juan County is comprised of wealthy individuals and families who can afford expensive residences and lifestyles. And myth two, our four school districts on San Juan, Orcas, Lopez, and Shaw Islands should be consolidated into one district. These myths are at the heart of the funding prices facing our county's necessary rural and remote schools. Our county is comprised of countless working families of varied economic circumstances. Housing prices are out of reach for the average family, placing enormous pressure on hiring and job retention for businesses and public service organizations like schools. Our school districts have examined consolidation and tested cost-sharing resources, but continue to run into obstacles because of their isolation on separate islands. Our school districts face grave financial situations created by the legislature in 2018, only avoided in the short term with Band-Aid funding from ESRS. Four key funding decisions enacted by the legislature are leading the Lopez Island School to end this year in a deficit, with our other school districts following. These include regionalization, the levy lid, the cap on special education, and the prototypical school funding model. Our schools are vital to this county, and the legislature has a constitutional obligation to ensure adequate funding for the children of our future. Please step up to this task with the urgency it deserves in this and subsequent legislative sessions. Thank you.
Jane, before you go, are you saying that you would like to see consolidation, that there would be savings from the consolidation of your three school districts?
Thank you, Chair Wellman. We have four school districts.
Four.
And we can't consolidate them. And there is a belief among many in the legislature that we should consolidate our school districts to save money, and I just wanted to call out to the committee that that process has been actually tried, it has been studied, and we have massive problems with consolidating because our school districts on separate islands that are individually ferry-served and trying to transport our children to schools on different islands is extremely problematic.
Thank you. I was just checking in on that one. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
And Chair Wellman, if I can also just mention.
Yes.
We will continue to look at cost savings, and we're committed to that as districts. It's just, it's a nonstarter, but I just wanted to share that. Thank you very much.
I appreciate that. No, thank you. And I understand we have Kate back.
Thank you for the redo, Chair Wellman. I'm Kate Davis, Executive Director of Finance for Olympia School District. Thank you for hearing this bill and bringing levies to the conversation this year. We appreciate what the bill is proposing, and I ask for consideration to expand the reach so that all districts may benefit rather than only property-rich districts. Many school districts without regionalization have communities wanting to support their students above and beyond the current cap. We ask the legislature to look at a percentage-based system. We assume the state funding formulas have built-in equity enhancements and other mechanisms to respond to student and staff need. A percentage system will emphasize what the state already deems important and will respond as the state makes future investments. The majority of the state formulas are rooted in providing staff. Having a percentage system provides the additional professional time that each educator requires to prepare for the year, collaborate, and wrap things up at the end. All items not funded by the state. Any change in this formula must also look at local effort assistance so that we do not exacerbate the problems where levy is a heavy burden on communities. LEA was $404 million in 2017, $450 million in 2018. In 2025, it is budgeted to be just $211 million. The diversion of these funds to other priorities diminishes these communities' ability to have a voice and how they support their students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we'll move to our in-person panel, Melissa.
Chair Wellman, Ranking Member Hawkins, Honorable Members of the Committee, my name is Melissa Gomboski, here today on behalf of ESD 105 Schools Advocacy Coalition and Vancouver Public Schools, signed in other today on the bill. Chair Wellman, thank you for your consistent dedication to finding financial and good policy solutions for our schools. Unfortunately, we are here as other today. By no means do we want to prevent the 11 school districts that are helped in this bill from finding budget solutions. We do, however, have concern that this policy in front of you helps 68,000 of the over 1 million students in Washington State, so it is a very small, narrow fix. I appreciate the commitment from other proponents of the bill today that talk about their commitment to levy equalization and LEA, maybe doing that through the budget process. Respectfully, we would ask that you amend this bill to include those provisions so that more of our 295 districts would see solution and not just 11. You've heard time and time again that our prototypical model needs updating, our MSOC is not keeping pace, our substitute rate costs are not working for our schools. We need a comprehensive financial fix. We believe that this, we need a suite of solutions for our school districts, so we would ask for your consideration of a little bit of expansion and not asking the rest of the children in Washington State to wait till next year.
And I definitely appreciate where you're coming from. That is not an easy or a quick fix, and so I'd be very happy to see any written planning that you have that would help us to actually begin to resolve issues about the school districts you represent. And that goes through, really true for anyone. Yes. Dan.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the committee, Dan Steele with school administrators and school business officials. We have some of our members that support this and a lot that have concerns, so we signed in other today. And really, we think the issue on the table really is the fact that the legislature continues to not meet their constitutional obligation to fully fund basic education. And truly, we probably wouldn't have a problem with increasing the levy lid for enrichment levies if, in fact, school districts used levies for enrichment. Much of the levies continue to go to backfill the legislature's unfunded needs. We also think this bill would further exacerbate the needs between the haves and the have-nots. The McCLeary solution in 2017 and 18 that the legislature adopted, the major tenet behind it was to actually reduce or eliminate inequities. We think with the regionalization, with the flawed methodology and unfair application of experience factor, major changes to levies and local effort assistance, it actually exacerbated those inequities, and we'd rather see an overhaul of those as opposed to doing this. And Madam Chair, I understand your concern about doing this over a long period of time, can't do it overnight, but in honesty, we've actually been fighting this battle for the last six years, so it's not just this year. Finally, I'd just say, if you do decide to actually increase the levy lid, whether it be through this bill or another mechanism, we really encourage you to help the majority of districts through local effort assistance or some other mechanism, make sure that we don't continue to exacerbate these inequities. Thank you.
Thank you. And any specifics that you want to write, be very happy to receive. Charlie.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the committee, I am Charlie Brown. I'm here today on behalf of the South Sound Superintendents. They're a coalition of school districts primarily throughout Pierce County that get together and work on policy issues. We are also signed in other on this legislation. We have grave concerns that this bill might represent a vehicle that people can go home and say that they fixed some of the school funding problems, when in fact, they didn't do it for the majority of the school districts across the state. We understand that regionalization is broken. We've argued that regionalization's been broken for quite a long time. We don't think that it gets fixed by changing the levy provisions to allow for regionalization for certain districts that can, you know, go ahead and collect money on that right now. So we would ask that you actually work on programs that would provide real funding to all the districts across the state. Madam Chair, your Transportation Bill is one of those, where we know that there's gaps in state funding for the basic education. We think that fully funding special education would help these school districts. We think that if the state were to come in and increase MSOC so that we could cover the cost of our risk pool insurance costs that have been going up for every district across the state, that would be helpful. We also think that if you would help us cover the cost of the utility rates that have been going up across the state, that would also be helpful. Those are programs where we can make real meaningful impact for every school district across the state. I'll be happy to outline that for you, Madam Chair. I am asking you simply not to just do one little fix, but to do something for every school district across the state, and I appreciate your consideration of our requests.
Thank you very much. As you may know, we have been working on fixing our transportation budget for four years. I'm hoping this year we've got it right, and we can move forward with that. I, yes, okay.
And I really do, I'm serious when I'm thanking you for all the work that you are doing. I believe that your efforts have been, they're not gone unnoticed. We are trying to get both sides of the legislative body to agree to those changes as well.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Melissa.
Good afternoon, Chair Wellman and members of the committee. My name is Melissa Beard. I'm here on behalf of WASDA, the School Directors Association. I'm also on the Tom Water School Board, which is right down the road. It's a theme. We're also here as other, and as you can imagine, with our 295 school districts, we see the, our members see this issue in different ways. And while it will help some of our districts serve students in a, you know, in a better way, it's not going to help the majority of our districts. And I know that you know that, so I'm not going to repeat it. What we are interested in is looking at this in, we have heard often, a quick little fix, and then we're going to go look at it later and fix, and do more fixes. And we want, we just want to look at this in totality and look at this more, this regionalization issue more than every six years. We want probably a biannual look at regionalization. And we worry about building more infrastructure on a system that you identified in your opening comments on this bill, that regionalization doesn't work. We don't want to build more infrastructure on top of that.
Would you feel more comfortable, other than myself, you know, committing to working on this, which I have, would you feel more comfortable if that was within the bill itself that required there to be a second phase of this to move forward?
Yeah, it would be, it would be nice to see what that language would look like to give, to see, for our other districts to see that relief is also coming.
Yeah, I think that there are so many issues, you know, as, because we tour the state every year, and there's a little bit different here than there is there. Some, we've got everything.
Yes.
And it's really great, but all different kinds of things need to be fixed.
Absolutely. Yes.
Thank you so much. And we have, we have a remote panel. Have we called that already? That's Rob Bryant and Jacob Vella. So Rob, are you there?
Yes, Madam Chair. I am here.
Yes, please continue.
All right. Madam Chair and members of the committee, my name is Rob Bryant, CFO for Federal Way Public Schools. Thank you for all you do to support K-12 education. On behalf of Federal Way Public Schools and Superintendent Dr. Pfeifer, I am here today to respectfully voice our concerns with Senate Bill 5956. The proposed solution to add regionalization to the broken levy formula does not address the root problem of underfunding in K-12 public education. Rather, it would place even more responsibility upon our communities instead of at the state level, as was intended by McCLeary. This legislation will create further funding gaps and exacerbate inequities between school districts, not only for the districts that have zero regionalization, but more importantly, for the districts that do not have a large tax base and whose communities cannot afford the additional tax burden. The proposed changes overlook the existing disparities and will inadvertently lead to further disproportionate distribution of resources, hampering the overall quality of education and perpetuating systematic inequities. While we know that a number of districts are struggling to adjust to decreases in enrollment, this challenge does not change those aspects of basic education that are this challenge does not change those aspects of basic education that are still not fully funded, including special ed, LEA funding, transportation, prototypical funding model gaps, and gaps created by the existing regionalization formula. We are calling on you to uphold your responsibility under the paramount duties to provide ample funding for basic education. This proposed bill does not help to solve this need, it just adds to the inequity of the system. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Jacob. Are you there?
Yes. Thank you, Chair Wellman and members of the committee. My name is Jacob Vella with the League of Education Voters, and I'm testifying as other today. The state is not fully funding the cost of basic education, especially for special education, instead relying on districts to use levy funds to provide for a basic education. This proposal would create a levy system very much like the grandfather levy system we had up until 2018, where the levy lid of a district impacts their ability to provide a basic education for their students, recreating the exact problem identified by the State Supreme Court in the McCleary case. Property wealth is the most significant factor in determining per-student state education funding, and at the local funding level, wealthier districts pay a fraction of the levy rate while raising more levy funds than their peers with lower property wealth. This proposal will further compound existing inequities in our levy system. Any change in levy authority must have a comparable increase in local effort assistance. I understand the financial stress many districts are in, but we need solutions that build more equity into the system, not compound existing inequities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And we have one final panel?
Yes. Superintendent Kelly Aramaki, as well as Jackie McGorty, and Julie Salvi, and Andrew McCollum.
Superintendent, why don't you just jump in?
Oh, great. Hi, Senator Wellman, members of the Senate Education Committee. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Kelly Aramaki. I'm the Superintendent of the Bellevue School District, and I'm here to testify in support of Senate Bill 5956. Coming out of the pandemic, Bellevue has 550 homeless students and approximately 4,000 students who qualify for free or reduced lunch. The local enrichment levy helps to pay for critical supports for our kids, from mental health to intervention, social workers, and of course, as others have talked about, special education. Without regionalization accounted for in what we can collect in our local enrichment levy, our levy dollars have diminished and inequitable buying power compared to others, our state apportionment dollars. This bill is a critical step in fixing this, not just for Bellevue, but for other districts like Blaine, Lopez Island, Highline, Sumner-Bonnie Lake, all the way down to Waschugel. If this bill were to pass, it would result in nearly $5 million for the Bellevue School District this coming school year, and over $9 million every following year, at no cost to the state budget. This would help shrink our structural budget deficit projected to be $45 million over the next three years. Coming out of the pandemic, Bellevue is part of a growing list of school districts in every corner of the state that are close to or already on the doorstep of insolvency and in need of legislative action. In addition, as others have mentioned, we do, in Bellevue, support funding for increases in local effort assistance funds to support the other 222 districts that have limited ability to raise funds through the local levy.
Thank you. Would it also be fair to say that you have over 100 languages that you're supporting in Bellevue schools?
Yes, that's right.
Thank you. Jackie?
Oops. Are we there? Good afternoon, Chair Wellman and members of the committee, and thank you for hearing us today and for all the work that you do for our students. I'm Jackie McGorty from the North Shore School District Board of Directors, here to testify in support of SB 5956. I think you've probably heard my thoughts about a dozen times over before me now, but bear with me. North Shore is currently facing a $26 million budget deficit for the 2024-25 school year, the largest in 40 years. Even after deep cuts in central admin, we may also have to cut programs and another 100 jobs across the district. This bill could provide a much-needed increased revenue of $11.7 million through the levy process, though not in time for 2025. We are very grateful that this bill calls out the need for regionalization and for local levies to bridge the funding gaps, and we ask for your support, appreciating that this is a first step. And North Shore is fortunate to have a supportive community that can afford to provide additional levy funding, so our students will likely benefit from this bill, hence my position here. But we are keenly aware that many across our state cannot afford more and so will not benefit from this bill. So we ask that you also address LEA funding in the budget this legislative session. This bill will increase inequities across the state, and honestly, much, I think everyone would much rather see the need for levies eliminated in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Julie?
Good afternoon. I'm Julie Salvi with the Washington Education Association. We signed in pro today on this bill, recognizing that you are addressing an issue in the system and providing some help to some districts. As you've heard from many others up here, we would also call on you to continue the work that you're doing in looking at the special ed funding formula, transportation, funding for paraeducators, any number of the bills that you've heard and are working on this session. And we would also recommend that you look at levy equalization, as that is a system that is kind of falling down. More and more districts are falling out of that system, and those who are receiving levy equalization are getting less. And so we do think that that is one that needs some special attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew, wrapping it up.
Hello. Thank you, Chairman Wellman and the committee. My name is Andrew McCollum, and I'm a proud father of three, two of which are behind me here, and very big shout-out to Ada and Jackson for sitting through very quietly. I am here in support of Senate Bill 5956. As stated by Chair Wellman, this bill is the first step, and hopefully many, to come at looking at the shortfalls of the enrichment levy model. I ask that the bill sponsors consider reevalizing regionalization factors to ensure school districts like mine here at the Olympia School District are not left behind. For example, returning to the percentage-based system and creating a levy equalization or LEA for LEA for the low tax-based districts are some ideas the committee could review. Levies are an important source of funding for many schools. My district has been experiencing significant financial shortfalls, and I ask that, because of the consequences due to the enrichment model for levies. The cuts have had significant negative consequences on my family.